Six thirty, I appreciate everybody coming tonight to the Darlington City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, May the third, six thirty. Give us a word of prayer tonight. Dear Father, thank you for this night, Lord, thank you for the rain that you've given us, thank you for all the time that we have to work together, Lord, and thank you for our beautiful town. Thank you to this council, Lord, watch over God and rest us, and give us the wisdom that we need, and to work together, Lord, to benefit the best for the town, that will be our shining testimony for you and all of us saying, and watch over us and God and rest us, and help us have a good night. Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Stand up for President.
Bless your nations, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I might make sure I've got your mic so I can hear you good. All right, do I have a motion for approval of amendments to the regular city council meeting on April the fifth, two thousand twenty-two?
I'll motion approve the regular city council meeting on April third, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Mr. Millian, Mr. Nettles, Ms. Backus, Mr. Seeger, questions carried. All right, do I have approval of tonight's meeting agenda?
We need to make two amendments to the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, the first would be under new business, I would put this at nine D, it says purchase of mowing truck for sports complex, and I would say and discuss architectural drawings that came in after this agenda was posted and created. And then under executive session, at the end where it says two oh seven Sistrion Street, I would say and discuss an economic development opportunity that was just presented to the city. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve amended agenda for tonight?
I make a motion that we approve the, the meeting agenda with the additions.
I'll second that.
Mr. Millian, Mr. Nettles, Ms. Backus, Mr. Seeger, questions carried, thank you. Okay, the standing committee, Darlington Downtown Revitalization Association, please.
Minor technical difficulties. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and do my report, as I'm doing this. After a busy April with the taste of Darlington and our annual get on the green fall tournament, we also ended the month with our cleanup day for the beautification board Darlington Garden Club. And we had probably thirty, thirty-five volunteers show up this past Saturday, and they collected probably twenty-one bags of litter from the street. And they also planted flowers and put out pine straw and mulch to kind of beautify the area and beautify the town before folks come in for it. Of course, after all of that, we are preparing for our summer concert series, Saturdays on the square, in your packet, and there are some flyers for the audience as well, that has the complete schedule. Our kickoff event is going to feature Muddy Creek Revival, which is a southern rock and country band. They're going to be performing on Saturday, May fourteenth, from seven to ten P. M. on the public square. The Darlington Cruisers plan to continue their monthly car shows during concerts, and we have a solid group of food trucks that are scheduled to attend. Thanks to Pepsi, Fiber Industries, Belk Funeral Home, Wilson Senior Care, the city of Darlington has been a sponsor. And thank you to the community for supporting our efforts, we've seen the crowd and the numbers attending just grow and grow every, every, every event. The slate of bands continues with Beach Music Hall of Famers, jazz band, country music artists, and then we will end the year with a New Year's Eve party with Level Ten Band and Show again on New Year's Eve, and we will drop the ball. We are continuing our monthly number breakfast at eight A. M. on Thursday, May twenty-sixth, at Taki's diner. The meals are at no charge for members of the D R A, and a small five dollar fee to go towards the meal for all others. The event typically is on the last Thursday of the month through October, we kind of skip November and December, because there's just too many conferences. But it allows our businesses to connect with each other, because we need to strengthen our local economy, and one way to do that is for businesses to meet that may not run into each other any other way. In the meantime, we also continue to print Darlington's businesses on social media and through a newsletter system each week. Our alerts reach to more than twenty-seven hundred people, and we continually update our webpage, buildupdarlington.org, which is where you can sign up to receive those alerts either on your phone via text or directly to your email. Any questions?
The Darlington Chamber of Commerce?
Hello, how are y'all?
Good night.
So first and foremost, the main thing, Freedom Fest, I'm really excited about is June twenty-fifth in the square from four to nine. So we will be having six rides, and I can go ahead and tell you those rides right now, we'll be having slims, the Berry Go Round, the trackers for the little kids, and then a bunch of tranquilin, a rock wall, and then a sliding plate. We are raising money for that right now, and we are also taking dinner applications as well. And then at the first Saturday of every month, there's a Bluegrass Festival at the Grand Post Office, we do have complimentary tickets if you are interested, you can call me or text me, my number is eight four three three oh seven ninety six eleven. And then again, I will go, quickly go over our, the awards that we did award out at our membership banquet, so rising star was down by the Creek Boutique, small businesses, PD Treasurers, big businesses, five countries, Educator of the Year went to Dr. Jeffrey Havoff. Our healthcare award went to Free Medical Clinic, Donovan County Community Pride, which is the Donovan Garden Club, as well as the Beautification Board, Four Member of the Year, which is Anna DeWitt, and then Life and Achievement, Achievement, which is Mr. Robert Scott, and Beth Alon Conant. And then we do still have the Isle of Bronze and the Mars, the side of the T-shirts in your packet, you can see the image of what they were tied up. This Friday, Taki's diner will have their race party, home with live music by Leslie Duffy, and it is from six to ten. Carrie Laurel works at Five Country Shrooms, and she's the Kennedy Presses editor, and she just won, she has been awarded the Women in St. Step Ahead Award, this is a very good deal for Carrie over at Five Country Shrooms. This month is strength awareness month, so Carolina High is having two events this month, first is a lunch line, that is Thursday, May twelfth, from twelve to one, it will be at Carolina High. The second event is Saturday, May twenty-first, from nine to one to twelve, and it's just kind of like a fair, strength awareness, practice activity, seminars, CPR training, there's also the kids center as well. There will be dual prizes valued up to six hundred dollars, there's two flyers at the back. First at the church, their vacation bike school, will be the week of June twelfth and June sixteenth, and it'll be in the senior, kids ages of three to five grade. That is all that I have, are there any questions?
Yes, so the rides for Freedom Fest, how much are they for the children? Do we do rides, right? So I just want to make sure that we're good with the riders.
What's the date, June twenty-fifth, is that?
Yes.
What time, about noon?
Four to nine.
Citizens wishing to speak. We have today's standup. Today's. Stand.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, citizens. I think for tonight, because I wanted to thank you all for being here, they, they will support this for us, the restaurant is concerned, and I thank you. I'm still having some coverage work that's lacking on the front of that building right now, so that's been a whole up for me as far as, you know, the coverage, completing the job. Other than that, I'm waiting on some equipment that I've ordered that's coming in, my sign should be coming in sometime this week, I've had a lady and everything, so that should be coming in and, and placed. With the coverage work, I, I just needed to stick a chain of people before it got to, I mean, that's the only things I, I take for granted, that, you know, I trust people to be able to do what they're supposed to do, and when you, when you pay them, you know, you're expecting that to be done, and I'm really disappointed in that, but anyway. But that's okay, as I told you in the beginning, I'm a fire, and we keep on going. Waiting on the equipment, telling you about that, and telling you about the sign. I am just really pleased that the number of people that would stop by and just, you know, wish me well, that means a whole lot. I, I've, I've just been doing related with that, because it makes me feel good that the city is really looking after, you know, what I'm trying to do. And I hope, I'm hopeful, and I'm, and I'm sure that it will be, at my point in time of completing this, this project, that is, is going to be a nice of a project, and it's going to really make Darlington stand out. And I just, I just want to thank you.
Are you willing to have a grant opening or anything?
I'd like a grant opening, I have not set a date for that as of yet, I want to try to get most of my stuff done, so that I can kind of get you all to taste a little bit of food, you know, a little bit of time, and see, see what you think, and then we'll have a happy bank.
Okay, well, maybe reach out to the chamber, see if that might be a kind of guide or a little bit, help you with that, and I might give you something, publicity, that you might not regularly have access to.
Okay, thank you very much.
This your first time being in business?
Yes, this is the first time, I work with my brother, but I didn't have the business part on there, I, I worked for him, but I didn't know about how to do business, I'm learning.
My daddy, my daddy graduated from sixth grade, but he always taught me something, he said, hey, I learned something, one thing I always learned, he was, you know, make sure it's going, right?
That was my mistake, that was. But that's, that's okay, that's okay, because I don't get to miss that, but that's not, uh, I'm tired.
We're ready for you to open up, because everybody draws a love seat.
Oh, yeah, but I, I think you're going to enjoy this, as soon as I get to the beginning, and hopefully it won't be too long, okay, so, y'all keep me in your prayers.
Thank you.
Chairman, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor Ball, council members, women, citizens, and I am a native of Darlington. My street looks like a jungle, Jefferson Street, whenever it needs to be cut, I usually have to call Mayor Ball to send somebody down here to cut. Okay, the road stops and runs, one half to stop and the other, snakes are terrible this time of year, and they start coming out. I don't know why the street looks like this, they have these bamboo sticks going all the way up, all the way up, they can only cut a street, that's what they say. Now, I didn't do all my homework, because I want to know who owns that property, because if they're not going to do anything unless the ball is there, I was told that they had to get in touch with the people, send them a letter out, and then they would have to reply, and they would give them ten days, you know, to get back to them. I don't know what's going on, but somebody needs to do something, if they're not going to take care of property, they need to be cited, they need to do something, because it looks horrible over there on my side of town, and I really want something done, and I don't want to cause other twenty fifteen and twenty thirteen to come and see how it looks over here, but it looks pretty rough. And it needs to be cut, but every time I have to call somebody coming through, and they just run on the street, but those damn streets, it's just, it's ridiculous, it shouldn't look like that.
What's your address?
My address is one thirteen, and the house side, the lot that I'm talking about, is one thirteen. So maybe they can come down here and do something, because it, it is awful, it looks terrible.
Is the, is the lot that's just in front of you, or beside you, that you're talking about?
Is the lot that's beside you, you're talking about?
No, it's not beside me, it's a couple of doors down, like you're coming into Jefferson Street, right from out of all mill, when you turn in, it's one, two, three houses, and when you get to one thirteen, it's the lot right beside that house, one thirteen.
On the left side, right?
Yeah, going down, it would be on the left side, it's ridiculous.
You know where Milner Street gets in, at, at Jefferson, right behind you, it is the lot there, it starts there, it's right there, and that lot.
That lot, two more lots, and one across the street.
Going towards Washington, on that side, and it's been that way for years, like she says, that's what she comes and comes, we have to add.
What I'm asking for is for every lot in town to get cleaned up, to get them to notice, if they don't get the notice, get it cleaned up, we get it cleaned up, and we give them a bill, they'll pay the bill, you know, put it on a tax lane, they'll pay the tax lane, something like that, and we give them money, a couple blocks of.
It's been about seven years from now, and they still don't do anything yet.
We got a number of places around town that people are on, and there's some locals along the way off, and they just let it go.
Well, they must have never sent the papers out, because I've been going through this for a couple of years, but anyway.
Ms. Hand. Do you know whether about this person who owns his deceased, or whether we're dealing with a live, living people?
Well, what I heard of that, the person that owns it, who's not deceased, I don't know, I started to go to the courthouse to inquire about it, but like I said, I didn't do all the homework, and I decided to come and discuss it, you know, but it could be, but after so many years, you know, and, and they cut a little street, you know, because they're saying, now, now they're going to ruin the property and do anything, but it looks horrible over there.
Your address is one thirteen?
I'm one thirty-three.
One thirty-three.
Yeah, but the property decided is one thirteen, and he keeps his grass cut, but on the side of him, it's just like.
Can't even, you can't even see his house.
And see, what's going to happen, the roads where people passing, you can't get by, you got to wait for one person to come out before the other car to go by, because you could call the red, you know, the way the trees are growing up and growing over and growing all out in the street. You know when I called him last year, he came and had that little street cut, you know, but it's time again.
You can go and count your successors though, how much I need to get.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do, you know, I was going to go down there and check.
If you call me tonight, I'll look it up.
And see who, who, if it belongs.
Okay, thanks. Last year, they had a, I don't know which one, but a relative was, was handling the red.
This is a little talk tonight, the vote there was raised too much during the pandemic, you couldn't lower it, because the city used it to raise, to raise to secure a bond, to get the work done on Broad Street. Now, you have a vacant building owners. When councils started to talk about the vacant commercial buildings downtown, it seems that it moved swiftly to vacant property all over the city, and that the vacant property was talking about, talking about in council meetings, with the junk outside of meetings, I didn't hear anything else about the house, but I knew about the vacant buildings downtown. I'm for maintaining your property, keeping my yard manicured, paying my taxes, but not saying that I can't hold my house if I'm ready to sell it or hold it, till I return to you for a return home without being changed, changed, charged extra, because it's vacant, that's ludicrous, and it seems to be dumb and dippy. Away from buyers to buy up citizens' property who can't afford to pay the fee for the house being vacant. Everyone is not blessed to be born with a silver spoon in their mouth, or with a high-paying job. It's enough to pay the taxes and maintain the yard, no money for high labor and supplies for high-dollar certified workers. One paper that I have shows a fee up to one thousand dollars for one to three years, and the other paper that I have, it says three thousand dollars for one to three years, other fees are on the sheet also, which one is correct? I guess the owner of a vacant house for longer than thirty days must register to get a form for the, for property exemption. The vacant property could be used as a storage, could be a vacant home, could be moving home in five years, et cetera. Could that be used, or do you want to make the citizens pay attention? Seems like the city is asking too much of the citizens, telling citizens what they can or cannot do with their property, other than paying the taxes and keeping surrounding area clean, like I said before, this is ludicrous.
Thank you. Ms. Hand.
Good afternoon to the mayor of the city and the city councils, my first reference, I wasn't at the last one, because of the weather and everything, and I wasn't feeling well, but I'm referring back, this is May, April, which is that March meeting that I was at, and my first issue is that where that meeting, where the mayor said, this is my meeting, and my thing on this, that we as citizens voted for you as a mayor of Darlington, and when it comes to the citizens, that includes all, it just can't be just by one person saying my meeting, that's just my way of feeling, I think there's a respectable way of talking to each other. I was here when we were talking to Mr. Lewis, he's a senior citizen of Dar- Darlington, he's been around here, living in this city all this time, I think there's a better way of respecting people, and that we can agree and disagree. My other thing is, it seems like every time I come to the meeting, it's all about the city of Darlington, the city of Darlington, my thing is, like you say, we got the oil mill, that's smelling like crazy, you go around it, your eyes burn, your nose run, got a whole lot of senior citizens over there, they're not coming to these meetings, because they're not, they're not able to come to the meeting. That's the same thing, I've been at this meeting over and over, about the same oil mill, nothing's being done, seems like nobody cares, because they're not living around it, when you living around this every day, and got to smell those fumes, it's not good at all, it's really not good at all. I just wanted for you to be, maybe there's something y'all can do with this oil mill, I know it's a great amount of progress, that the people have to smell this every day, we have, you can't even come out on your porch, because it's smell, it's terrible, it's a terrible smell to have to smell, and I said before, I'm speaking for some of the senior citizens that are living over there, I live around them, I know them, and that's not bad for us to have to go through this, and we are constantly going through this, and nobody's paying us any attention. It's the same thing, I've been coming to this council meeting over and over, even when we was at the pandemic, when I brought up again about the water, it wasn't going to come to that either, because it's, we had the pandemic, senior citizens are not coming out, most of them don't even know about it, all they know is that what they're going through, and it's not fair, it's not fair to anybody, like I said, everybody should be treated the same. Like I said, everybody should be treated the same.
Mrs. Haines? Uh, my understanding is, we've checked with the oil mill, but according to code and crypts, uh, there's nothing the city can do about it because it's already, uh, situated for that type of, uh, environment, okay? Uh, that type of business. So, according to my understanding, because they're through OSHA, DEA, and whoever else they do what they're supposed to do, the city can't order and clutch it down, and I agree, it smells, smells bad.
Right.
Again, you know, our hands are tied to cancel, can't order, and change it, so it's not that we don't wanna do anything about it. Um, so again, you know, there's a lot of little things that we'd like to do about other places and businesses too, that we, our hands are tied, can't control the way people do this. Um, so again, that's, that's, you know, not, we're just trying to ignore it, really. Since you did call my name, I'll, I'll address you, okay? Uh, the other day, okay? Me and Mr. Lewis talked with each other afterwards, you know? He got a little fasted, I got a little fasted. But when I say that it's my town, so that the whole world can hear this, this is my town, okay? Now, I'll take it out of context, if anybody would like to take it out of context, but it's also your town.
Right.
And as I said, I don't have a whole lot of control of anything. I got one vote, I'm the postulable, I'm the mayor's postulable, okay? But when anybody comes up for anything, they come to the mayor, okay? And I do have control of one thing, I'm supposed to have control of one, which is I'm supposed to control the council, the meeting, this meeting, okay? So when I say this is my meeting, it's all our meeting, we're here to get it. Everything that's done in the city of Dorlton is not done because Curtis wants it. It's done because Curtis might want it, but he can't get it unless the rest of them. Mr. Miller might want it, he can't get it unless we all want it. Mrs. Backus is the same way, Mr. Nettles, Mr. Millen, Mr. Seagars, Mr. Garter, Mrs. Reed, all of us, okay? We all want lots of things, but we all have to work together. So, this is, I am in control of the council, okay? So, I don't own anybody. I don't own, I only own myself, okay? But I am happy to be here and work for everyone, and I did try to control the council, okay? That's my, that's my job, okay? Keep it where we all work together and not get out of handles.
Yeah, I understand that, but just get that last.
But again, you know, with the oil mill and all that, we try. Um, and we, and so everybody understands with the water bill, you know, we're, you know, they keep bringing about the water bills and all that. We're here to try to, to make sure things be less to, to lower it back. We'd love to lower it back, but we can't, you know? We've got to try to keep control of what we got where we can get us out of the hole, so where we can provide a good clean water and land support, and Mr. Shiregartman's doing a fantastic, fantastic job, um, going out to his crew, going out and making sure that the water lines are being fixed and repaired, and that just takes a lot of money. We don't, we just won't raise anybody for it. Um, and so we're trying our best to accommodate, to get stores of the money that we have.
Okay, I understand that.
Just before you, and mayor, uh, just a couple of months ago, because of the, I did go and, and, and meet with the, um, the owner or the manager that was out there, and they are trying to find some kind of filter. It hasn't come, but because of the, because of the complaints and, and you're not the only one, and they are aware of, of the community and, and senior. But they are trying to, from my understanding, to try to get some type of filter to help with that, um, with the, with the smell. However, they did indicate that the, what you are smelling is not harmful to you, according to DEA. Can be for those of us who suffer with, with all kinds of allergies and things, if that's all you get. I'm, I'm in the same boat, so. But anyway, that was, I don't know whether you've ever since then or not, but that's been some, several months ago. That was kind of a form of talk.
Yeah, thank you, Dad. Thank you so much.
And towards that water bill is concerned, I've checked with other cities around us in different areas, and our water bills is questionable. Meaning that cities around us that I spoke with have periodically checked to make sure the meters are working properly. City of Darlington haven't had their meters checked to be sure that they are properly working. They're only gonna do, go along with just charging you excessively and not even want to find out whether the meters are properly working or not. Because I bought it to Mr. Payne, and I bought it to Shoe Guard, that we needed periodically check our meters.
Right.
But they don't wanna do that. They just sit and not notices, "Oh, you got a water leak," without verifying that all the meters are properly working. Because our citizens, they contacted me about three hundred dollar water bills, two hundred fifty dollar water bills, and they're checking and no leaks. But Payne and Shoe Guard is refusing to even address having our meters randomly checked to be sure they're working properly.
Great talk, great talk. That door can go hard, make sure we get a lot of bad pipes and things, all this. Mr. Sugar, Mr. Payne, if you guys got a problem with our work, they can check it up and know what's aggressive. Thank you, great talk, thank you.
Okay, well, what did you say, if I can have a problem with it?
If you got a problem with work, you can always check it up and ask questions, see what's going on with the state. There's a leak. The meter's running on one side, if the meter's running, then that means there's work, pick it from the other side. If the meter's not running, and there's water coming out the way, that means there's a leak from our side. If the meter's running, if there's a meter running, it's going through that pipe, it's going through that meter, and that means there's a leak from that side and the customer's side. At the end, the customers have always, times passed, and they're still, I'm sure, they were doing that, they come up with a major leak, um, that they'll address that and say something.
Only if the meter's working properly.
Okay, thank you.
If not, all working properly.
Oh. Public here, thank you all for your comments. All right, public here, okay? Amendment to regular city council meetings start time, uh, public comment. Anyone for that, please? Public here. Please. Does it tell us the public here?
I didn't receive any, anything in the mail or email. Or either.
Okay, so there's comments on that. All right, uh, D, zoning designation for property of Richmond and Spring Streets? Anything on that? Okay? All right, very good. All right, unfinished business, second reading ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash oh four, amendment to regular city council meetings start time and public comment. Mr. Payne?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, at the last meeting, I proposed starting the meetings thirty minutes earlier at six o'clock. Uh, I also had a proposal, which was, y'all, and asking to change it, which I have, uh, included total time, a lot of public comment in thirty minutes, which was council's request, and speakers will be allowed up to five minutes. Uh, that's incorporated into the amended ordinance.
Just need you to, do, do you have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the second reading ordinance of two thousand twenty-two dash zero four, amendment to the regular city council meeting start time and public comment.
I'll second.
Mr. Millen, Mr. Nettles, Mr. Backus, Mr. Seagars, okay? Mrs. Carey, thank you. Next week, next month, we'll start this, this will start at six o'clock. So, the public knows, and everyone, I don't know, next month, we'll start at six o'clock, instead of six thirty. Okay, second read ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash oh five, zoning designation of property at Richmond and Spring Streets. Mayor?
Yes, mayor and council. This property is being cleared at the corner of Richmond and Spring Streets for construction. Previously voted to annex a property into the city, and now it needs a zoning designation. It previously, for some reason, was already listed with a zoning designation on our map, even though it wasn't in the city. Um, but the planning commission reviewed it, and our six zoning designation, which is what was on the map, seems suitable to them and suitable to the, uh, property owners. And so that is what we're asking council to approve. No, nobody has commented by email or phone call. I've not received anything other than people asking what was going on there, and it will be filed with the council.
I'll make a motion that we approve second reading of ordinance twenty dash, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two dash zero five, the zoning designation property at Richmond and Spring Streets to be zoned as R six, identity residential, and this, and this property is reflected as tax map number one six four dash zero six dash zero one dash one oh four.
Second.
Mr. Nettles? Mr. Backus? Mr. Garter? Very good questions, Carey. Thank you. All right, new business, uh, first reading ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash oh six, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, budget and title only?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, it's that time of year again. Um, tonight is just reading entitled only, which, which, um, suffices the law, and I'll, I'll read this. Um, what I plan to do is ask that on May, let me get the dates right, Tuesday, Wednesday, May twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, we'll have our budget workshops. Uh, we'll get everything ironed out there, and either by the June meeting or early within the June, uh, we'll have second reading and everything packed. I've been working with county treasurer, our audit people out of West Columbia, and the, um, county assessor's office. Um, I've been watching the revenues, as I mentioned, when I, when I review budgets and revenues revenue, and I'm gonna make sure that we've got the revenues sufficient for the expenditures, but, um, tonight is, is entitled only, and I'll, I'll read this as ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero six, an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary municipal purposes for the city of Darlington and for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, to provide for the expenditures thereof and to provide for revenues for the payment thereof, as amended.
Just a thing, um, do you want me to motion to approve it for just the general information? Will there not be a public hearing on this?
We will.
Approximately when? Since we got some, uh, two, approximately when with that?
We have to post, at least I believe it's two weeks before final reading, we have to post in the paper, um, so we'll, we will have it.
So we probably, if we got workshops on the twenty-fourth, twenty-five, in order to have a public hearing and then have approval, we wouldn't be able to do that, and, or would be at the June meeting, or if we need a special edition?
We do workshops on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, this is, if on the next day, we ran, um, the advertisement and, and posted it per the law, uh, we could do it, fifteen days would be early June, we, our next meeting is June seventh, so that would give us time. Or if you felt, if the council felt that we needed to go a little longer, we could go into the next week. I just don't wanna wait until the last week of June. I wanna get this done in the first several weeks of June.
That's the reason I was just, just.
Yes. Oh, no.
Be sure everybody was aware of that claim.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve first reading of ordinance of twenty twenty-two dash oh six, which is an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary municipal purposes for the city of Darlington, fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two, and ending June thirty, two, twenty-three, to provide for the expenditures thereof and to provide for revenues and payment thereof, as amended, with this being a first reading, um, if you expect to comply on it.
Mr. Nettles? Mr. Backus? Mr. Reed? Seagars? Very good questions, Carey, thank you. All right, uh, initiation, initiating open period to set applications for nonprofits from hospitality tax funding?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Um, the state, excuse me, the city collects two percent hospitality tax on all prepared, uh, food and beverages in the city. Uh, the procedure that the city has used up until now is to, when anybody, any nonprofit wanted a contribution, if you will, uh, they just came, any, any time during the year. Um, other municipalities or other county governments that I've worked for had a, had a season, if you will, period, where applicants came, presented their request, a committee was assigned to volunteers, citizen volunteers, to review everything and make a recommendation to council. It was open only a certain period of time. If, if an entity applied, they were considered. If they didn't apply during that period, they had to wait until the next year. I'm just trying to get us to, to follow a more structured schedule so that you only have to deal with hospitality tax requests once a year. My proposal is, uh, after the budget's complete in June and July, to accept applications. Uh, then between September and October, uh, this committee will review and make recommendations to council. By fall, um, you can determine how much you want to allocate to whatever entities that. You'll, this will also give you the ability to determine as a council, how much you wanna spend out of your hospitality tax fund and then be done with it for a year. That is, it's a greater accounting of your funds, if you will. All I'm asking for, there's really nothing to, to vote on, I'm just kinda looking for council's blessing to move forward with this. A committee, you could set up a committee, eat several ways, the city's got several boards and commissions, I believe we could set one up in that manner, or if you wanted, and this is up to y'all, uh, each council member could appoint one person, or we could go and ask for citizen volunteers and everybody submit applications. I'm gonna leave that up to council.
I publicly think my suggestion that, that, uh, we also include not just nonprofit, mostly nonprofit, I mean, there are some, there are for-profit businesses posting something that is beneficial to the city, that if the committee decided that that wouldn't be excluded, you know?
That's, that's.
They would exclude that, exclude it, as long as it's something that's benefiting the city.
That's up to council, though.
We've talked about this before, I kind of have a structure. The council just needs to think about whether you want it to be us, or you wanna, you want us to select one person, or, uh, how you want, if you want to be the one to sign.
Or we could open it up, we could, we'd have to create a, a committee, so we'd have to go through that structure, um, and then let people apply, or what might be more expeditious is just for each council member to appoint one person. They know we have to serve generally about two months out of the year, just a couple meetings, it's not gonna be very laborious.
And the committee then, after they receive the applications, the committee then would submit that to council, to council to make the final decision?
Yes, ma'am, and whatever the committee, uh, recommended would not tie council's hands, those are simply recommendations.
Just taking it off you.
Yes.
Take the recommendation.
Well, we will receive, even if they're gonna make a recommendation of who they suggest, we will receive the whole list.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
I'm not, I'm not saying just the list is just, but everybody who applied.
Yes, ma'am.
Everybody here, Mr. Payne, moving forward with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Y'all wanna try to, where you want to appoint one person, or how you wanna do it?
Yeah.
Any support, fishing. That's fine, okay. That way it's representative of the council. Very good.
As, as we go along, you'll determine how much money, and you can change it every year. One year, you know, it could be X, and say it was fifty thousand dollars net, or it could be seven, whatever, whatever the funds are available, uh, that council will determine how much is available at that point.
You just, would you be building that into your budget?
Yes, sir.
And start, and start July approach?
Yes. I would, by then, when we go through the workshops, I'll just, y'all be thinking about how much you might wanna allocate for next year. We'll include it.
All right. Could you, could you give us a, a number together of what we traditionally have done for, you know, like we discussed, and Chamber, and ERA?
What I'll do is go back.
The ones that we've traditionally done for, to try to help, and then put back in place, um, so that way we know how much we've put traditionally in.
Oh, well, I'll go back a few years, and we can give you some numbers over several years. No, I'll give them as a present about that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, um, let's see, hospitality tax bond reimbursement to hospitality tax fund?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. You'll remember in our last meeting, we received legal counsel from a bond attorney. Uh, in twenty seventeen, the city took out a, a bond, uh, on our hospitality tax revenues, uh, one point nine million. It's down. It was one point nine million, it's down to about seven hundred and forty-four thousand. But because of IRS regulations and the taxes and status associated with that bond, those bonds, by June fifteenth of this year, you have to have that money spent down to two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, which is fifteen percent of the original bond. The bond attorney explained that we could reimburse ourselves for any any legitimate expenses from the H tax fund or from the general fund. And I got with with Ms. Pridgen, and you've got in your packet a list, and this goes back to twenty nineteen because he said I could only go back that far. And this shows four hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-five cents that's been spent on hospitality tax, that we could reimburse ourselves. So basically, we've been moving money from the H tax bond back to the H tax fund. And I just need a vote to, for you to give me permission to do that.
We're moving the money, but but it's understood that we're moving the money to still stay there for sports complex or whatever.
Or whatever, yes, this is a requirement, otherwise we jeopardize the bonds.
Motion to approve the hospitality tax bond reimbursement to the hospitality tax fund.
Second.
Mr. Nettles? Mr. Magnus? She? Hi, very good, thank you, questions, Kerry? All right, uh, new business, purchase of a mowing tractor for sports complex and the drawing.
I'm just going to give you one, just so you can have it in, just in case.
Mr. Pang's heading out the, yeah, the the drawing. Talking about the the tractor and the drag machine for the big sports complex. That is state contract through Rebel Tractor at Almeral Beach, it's John Deere equipment. What you should have is a tractor for the front end loader, seventy-two inch bush hog and seventy-two inch finishing board, and a hydrostatic drag machine, which is used to drag ball fields. And I think the total come in a little under, right at forty-nine thousand dollars for the two pieces of equipment. That's that's pretty cheap. Brand new pieces of equipment, like we're we're looking to get for. And that, and that, we can use it now, and it'll it'll carry over into the complex, and it can also be used out there now to cut the the growth out there now.
Motion to approve the purchase of the mowing tractor for the sports complex at forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Now, before before you go on, I want you to make, I want to make sure that you notice that that is two pieces of equipment. One of it is a tractor to cut grass, the other is a a basically a tractor that drags ball fields. So I just wanted to make sure that you that you get two pieces of equipment.
Oh, that amount?
Right.
Second.
It's state contract.
We got first and second.
Mr. Millie? Mrs. Nettles? Mrs. Magnus? She? Hi, questions, Kerry?
All right, the drawing from Mazingo Wallace come in, actually come in this week. And as you can feel, see, there's eight fields there, six three-hundred-foot fields, two two-hundred-foot fields, two four-field clover pods. It's got the all the amenities that that we wanted, except for the the go-kart track. There just was to to incorporate that in there, there wasn't enough area to accommodate the parking and the the extra stuff is that would go along with that. But everything else is included in there, you got pickleball courts, you got beach volleyball, you've got basketball, skate park, there's the amphitheater, which is going to be a meadow, an open space, that we can host concerts, or you can host, you can just go out there and hang out and have a picnic. We can have city picnics, whatever, in that spot. You have the frisbee golf course, you have multiple trails that you can go through, asphalted and non-asphalted trails. There's even a parcel that you have the the blown-up drawing of, that's two acres taken out, that you can either lease out or sell outright to a a restaurant or store. I think what we have in the drawing here is a convenience store. It's got everything we wanted. And what what we're looking at doing tonight is you bless it, or just take it as information, or whatever, but the faster that we can say this is what you want, the faster we can get the renderings done and move closer to get this thing built.
According to Mr. Mazingo, his layout, incorrect if I'm wrong, but his layout was designed according to the way the, the savings money for the way the land is structured and actually using the pond as there is retention pond.
Right, and and actually using the reti- using it as a retention pond, plus you can use it as an irrigation pond. The reason it's taken so long for him to get the drawings is because he was waiting on the topo survey, so he could get the lay of the land, and he could put it at, he could place stuff where it needed to be. So we wouldn't have to spend a lot of money moving dirt. You still gonna have to move, you still gonna have to move some dirt, but you're not gonna have to move as much dirt around as as if he'll put the fields on another side or at the back part of property.
The left-hand side is hard to see with this drawing here, but the left-hand side where it says frisbee golf, it's my understanding that that's going to be, basically the woods are still going to be there, it's just going to be cut through.
Right.
That saves us a lot, where we don't have to cover all the wood.
Right.
The front corner, where you turn into the drawdown, designed that section where if we're able to put H and F floors, sports complex on it, and Mr. Milk, Mr. Singers plays his five-hundred thousand dollars a year to do that, then I'm going to be and him.
Make the motion.
I don't know for a million, but I think Genesis will come up with six.
Oh, God.
But it's a good corner there, he's got a real good design to where we.
You're going, the the design is, if you're coming in from Darlington or even the Harford Way, the entrance is right there at the red light on the other side of the the water tower. And as you come in, you're going to come into a wooded area, and it's going to open up into the complex.
Well, he's got a, he's got a layout where you actually can come into the complex from beside night flower, correct?
Exactly.
And he also has it where you can come in beside, isn't that a convenience store or a restaurant or whatever?
Which would be.
We can put there, the purpose of that is so that it would generate funds back into the city. Then you also have another entrance, which would be the main entrance going down, what I call, I'm not sure the name of the road before you get to the drawdown, but I mean, he decided to go in for that way, so everybody will be able to come in and out on the red light. The amphitheater, we haven't asked for the amphitheater, but again, my understanding is if he wants to draw that, we don't, of course, we don't, we don't build all this at one point in time.
We're not married, we're not married to anything on this draw.
It could have been led to a plain green space.
Right, we're, that's what I was going to say, he, you're not married to anything on this draw.
And so that everybody's got a, so that everybody has an idea of the amphitheater, where he's got the middle there, says event meadow. My understanding, he said that's about three or three and a half acres, so you can get an idea of what you're looking at there. That's that little spot there is three acres. The convenience store at the front, he's bought off two acres to be able to sell or lease.
So is it done, so it's built in the state?
Yes, yes, sir, it can be phased out just as it is.
I just want this as a good start.
What do we need to do to move to the next stage?
I can make a motion for him to.
I'm willing to go forward with the rendering. That would be what the motion would be tonight, that you're happy with what's on this piece of paper, that you like that design. If there's something on there that sticks out that you won't move, we can move it, you can move it around. But the rendering, he's not going to do until you approve this. That way, we're not charged twice for two different things, that's just.
Does a rendering cost?
It's in the, it's in the cost, it's in the contract, he does two for us. So the, this is, before he goes on and does one and does it, and then you're not happy, then he would have to charge us for another one after that, so.
The only small change that I'm able to ask for is the pond. If there's any way to enlarge it a little bit, where it's really thin, I know, I went kite it until it's only like a foot, maybe a foot and a half deep. So.
It's deeper.
Deeper and or a little wider.
I don't think that would be as far as, that would be, I mean, we could, that would be something out of the the rendering phase, probably, that we could go into.
And they can draw it now, but there's still room there, because to the right of that is trees, is that correct?
Right.
And to the left is the amphitheater, which we're, we really don't want an amphitheater, I don't think.
No.
I don't think I'm a one. I'd like to have a green spot there, in the green space, but again, if we're going to order amphitheaters, fine. Again, there's room there that if we decided, now the judge could still do that anytime.
Gotcha.
Five minutes.
This way he can get a three-D drawing, go in, then we can work on deciding if you want to layer and how starts work to layer. So that's what we're starting with, for this number to get. Public skin over it, before we do work on.
I'd like to approve the new board, but the architect, architect, or the rendering.
And I'll second.
Mr. Millie? Mr. Nettles? Mrs. Magnus? Mr. Singers? Hi, very good, questions, Kerry?
I appreciate that. Stay right here, because I think I might be a part of E two.
Okay, discussion of opening city swimming pool?
All right, this month, this past month, we were, we were approached by Miss Diane Cohen and Miss Lilian Brunson about the use of the swimming pool. When COVID hit back in twenty twenty, pools, pools have been shut down for years, but it's been covered. Don't know what it looks like underneath the covering, because the city has always contracted out through a local pool company to actually run the pool itself. Because we have no, we have no staff members, that we don't have a a pool operator on staff. So it's always been contracted out. I know Lisa Bailey actually searched last year to try to find somebody to open it, just for partial season. Nobody replied, if it even did on opening it. And we have contacted people on behalf of the city this season. And we actually had a lady call back today and say, and that this was this afternoon, and say that they, they don't do that, but she gave us the name of a guy that may be interested, but I'll I'll be honest with you. We've been told that before, and never, you know, go out there to show up, to show them around, and they never show up, so. That's the predicament you are in, as far as the city pool goes. Just giving you the information.
I appreciate it. So I've had just folk in the area that would like to see it operating, but we can't, and it's such a liability. I don't know which way to do it, and we do not have anybody to, any of the, the pool companies to say that they will operate it. We don't get into legitimate one, I'm not sure what they did.
Well, I'd like to make the suggestion. The kids need something to do, but again, that is a, I always wanted to have a pool in my, in my facility, but they always say that's a money pit, and it sure is. And it's a major, major liability, of, in the past, I've lost my lives there, so to have somebody to watch it and watch the children there and take a good chance of somebody getting hurt. I would like to suggest that we look real, and not to say it, look strongly at putting two splash pads, nice splash pads in the city. A lot of money that's been spent there over the two years while we were closed. There's a lot spent this year. When the past city manager was here, I think that we probably put a nice splash pad over by the, by the stages, this free, maybe one of Hampton Street horses, two nice water pads for kids in the areas to, to be replaced. It's a suggestion.
Well, I'm not opposed to a splash pass, I mean, I like those as well.
The splash pad is true, that we're, I don't know, again, we need to find out for sure what the maintenance is on.
I just.
Nowhere near the maintenance is there, so we have to have a life for it, everything.
Those are full cost for months to line.
It would be a steady, over what we're doing, or it would take us twenty-five thousand dollars, those are three months.
What was spent last, do you have numbers on that?
Yes, sir, to open it for the two and a half to three months, it was just over twenty-five.
I said, what was spent over the last, do you have those?
Oh, well, since twenty nineteen, hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
And that would be very good.
You said that was what, now?
That's what we questioned last year.
Now, there was a lot of construction involved in that, bringing it up to code. I I don't know what shape it was years ago, but there was a lot of construction done on it. But but it'll take twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars for two and a half.
Was it in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty?
Twenty nineteen until most recent.
I think some was spent twenty-one, too.
Yeah, footwork, footwork.
Did we question the last year, the budget, why so much spent?
But, okay, last year, the question was because it seemed like there was overspending, right? I mean, but have we been able to justify what all that is? I mean, was the construction a?
During the last city manager's here, there was a lot, there was a lot done. The last city manager was here, that we questioned why, why that, those bills have been spent.
Yeah.
And paid for, and then we didn't, we didn't know.
I don't even know what limited knowledge I have of pools. When DA tells you to do something to open it, you best to do it to open it, or to shut it down. And a lot of those safety concerns are passed along. And I know the pump was bad at one point in time, they redid some deck work, they hid away with the key pool. Yeah, supposed to cover it, all of that stuff was was done in the past.
So what I'm hearing is necessary, I mean, it's just think that what's absolutely necessary if we were going to use it.
Right.
It had to be, these things had to be done.
Exactly, and and that's an ongoing thing, that's just not to get it to code, and then it's going to be that, that code. That's to get it to code, and you've got to keep spending money to keep it at code.
Keep it like that.
So in order to run the pool this summer, you're saying it's going to cost twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars?
Twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars.
So that's roughly. Because we, we would be said twenty-five, so you're talking roughly eight thousand dollars a month? Okay, so I don't think eight thousand dollars a month is a lot. Reason being is Freedom Fest. We spent fifteen thousand dollars on Freedom Fest for four hours. When they did the fireworks, we gave the check with fifteen thousand dollars for firecracks. So now you're going to sit there and tell me twenty-five thousand dollars for three months is too much for a pool?
I'm not going to tell you that.
So that's dirty, so that's dirty.
What we would have to spend though.
No, no, I'm not saying you personally, I'm just making a statement.
I got you.
I'm not saying you personally.
This man, this is twenty-five thousand dollars for the whole summer, or twenty-five thousand dollars to get started?
The whole summer.
And no, that's the whole summer.
So you think, so.
Somebody's going to man it and maintain it, or what?
If we, if if the city is going to pay somebody to man it, and then with the the salaries that. If we, if, if the city are going to pay somebody to man it, and then with the, the salaries that I said of, which I think was at like $15,000 an hour for a pool operator, $12,000 an hour for op, uh, lifeguards, plus the startup costs, plus for chemicals, um, it'd be between 20 and 25,000 dollars.
You can find someone.
Buy it to run it.
Right, because since that's the part of it, we still have to get someone to.
There more maintenance is gonna be done to it, because we, we.
I don't know. I really don't know, because the pump has been from, from.
There's always maintenance.
The pump's having gone on two years.
Our question is, my question is, if they give you a bill, that they wanted to do some work for $9,000?
Resill the, um.
And they give us a bill that we turned down?
No, that was $7,500.
And what was that for?
It was, I believe, something to do with the deck.
Resill the.
Resill the deck.
So, but, but they did do, they haven't done this.
That is just, if you were able to flip and switch them or cut it on, that would be the operating cost for the summer.
So, roughly $8,000 a month compared to $30,000 for eight hours of firecrackers and play around and quit.
Almost you got eight hours for a firecracker down there.
It sounds like a big difference to me. $30,000 for 10 hours, $25,000 for three months.
We don't, no, we don't know what the cost might be in order to bring it up to where we can spend $25,000 if we had somebody to operate it. So, it's $25,000 plus whatever is necessary to open the door. And D H is not expecting to tell us where to come.
And then this is contingent of, can't we break it up if we get any kind of response from someone that, a company that would handle it?
Yes.
And on top of that, just think about other money that we've spent. I think we spent probably quarter of a million dollars in these parts, to build some bridges, to bring it up to park.
That was grand one.
The way the money was spent in these parts, to fix the park.
Yeah.
To walk across them ridges.
Somebody gave you grant money, and they tell you this is all you can do with it, so tell them you're involved.
Some of that was city money. Some of that money came from the city.
All right, since you're in a position to contact D H, we see what D H said would have to be done before, while we're at the same time looking to see if we can find an operator.
We can answer your call. We can make that call.
Give you a better idea of whether we got $5,000 or $1,000.
Well, D H probably not gonna be able to give us a call so they can tell us what needs to be done to get it open. But what, what we need to find is a pool operator that y'all are happy with, that can do it.
Can you come back with us before, before June meeting, if you, if we have to call another meeting, go ahead and decide, uh, give us more accurate numbers, so we know what we're deciding on?
Maybe a mute phone if we don't.
I can, we can find a pool operator that City Council is happy with, that will come do that. Then yes, I can do that. If not, okay, mate, come back.
And that's all we said.
You're in, you're in full season now, too, so if you're talking about, it's almost two months now. I mean, I'm having some, on my floor, and there are two months out.
Well, yeah, exactly. And, and usually, um, I mean, Neptune Island opened in the 14th, which is in a week and a half. So, pools are opening, um.
So, let's get on, let's see what we can do, let us know.
Right. As a, a plant visitor, I want us to at least look into having this splash pass.
Can you get surprises on that?
Yes.
Please.
We'll be here on 24 and 25.
He's sorry.
Got you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, motion for, uh, through city, uh, vehicle advertising?
I'm asked to bring off the numbers, and you have this sheet, it should've been in your packet earlier, but I put another one on your desk. Just to get the prices, if we were to, since no businesses have contacted me showing any interest whatsoever, of putting their logos or advertising on the city vehicles. We do have the price, the bid price from News and Press to improve, and we could advertise ourselves. Our city businesses, our shop local, something like that. That is an option. If you were to do all six trucks, both sides of the trucks, the cost would be 6240, $6,240. If you wanted to do some sort of monthly business of the month or something like that on a vehicle magnet, um, $75 per, per magnet. For all six trucks, you're talking 450 bucks for one time. And if changed it every month, it's $5,400. So, if you were to do that for an entire year, that'd be $11,640.
Oh, well, maybe, maybe if we as the city advertise just for a few months, we do it on a monthly basis, might attract some, some other businesses to do it.
I was a thought, I was, we promote all places, but once you, once you've had the 6240, the trucks are, will look better, they're up there, they're advertising, or it's like, you wanna put on different sides of the truck for the city dogs. Um, the business of the month could be done every quarters, every month, that way you don't have to change it. You can do two, two businesses up there, the one business on four trucks, and another business on the four trucks to promote your, your local businesses, to make them happy and bring people back into the city dogs, and spend money and bring back, money back into dogs. Um, just to show our residents and business owners that we appreciate their business and that we love our town.
I have just a curiosity question. Just, both of them from News and Press, they got a bid in 2021.
It was for three years.
It was three years. Were they still willing?
Yes. They were very interested in doing it, and that is, includes installation costs. So, that's them creating it and putting it on the truck.
So, the thought was that if you did a business of the, business of the month, or you could just change to the business of the quarter, that you, you could, during the city council meeting, put the names of businesses in a pot, and you pull out a name. They, H and S fours, keep going here.
See, this was, this $11,000 cost would be a city cost, it would not be revenue.
Correct, yeah. This is, this is just the cost of the installation, there's no.
When we started, we were looking at hopefully a revenue stream.
Correct.
But that's not what happens.
And this is not worth.
The revenue stream would've been above, it would've been, instead of 6240 to do all trucks, both sides, it would've been a significant amount above that.
The 62, the 6240 is still hoping for a revenue stream, because you're gonna hope, so you're gonna, probably people to come in and shop into our local residents, which will bring more money back into the town.
It would be advertising.
Mrs. Reed said if we want somebody actually sees our trucks, it looks good, and they say, hey, we're paying it off, and we're providing.
Can we just do one or two and start that way? Is it that generates versus doing all of them, that generates?
That is all of you.
What was the question?
I asked if you could just do one or two vehicles to start it, is that generates any interest, rather than doing all the vehicles and not knowing what's gonna happen? It's like this of an investment.
You can do the ones that go out more, like the bigger truck or the garbage trucks, the garbage trucks are out more, right?
Yeah, garbage trucks are out more than.
Garbage trucks first, they're out every day, right? You can do the garbage trucks and then start that.
So, I can, I.
Do you have any trucks to ride with?
I think you're saying the garbage truck.
Is it the garbage trucks right more? The garbage trucks are out every day, so that would be.
They work 20 days a person, cycle and state.
You wanna do the, where Southern Hospitality and History meet, or the Shop Local, Shop Darlington?
I wouldn't do meat local, because then the people that don't have restaurants, but they were not supporting them. Um, I would even say Shop Local or Shop Darlington, or either where Southern Hospitality or, and History meet or something like that. We can do a mall cup and bring it back, if everybody's fine before we do anything, pretty much, we bring mall cups back to camp, we bring them again next time.
You wanna do that?
Yeah.
I'd like to bring a mall cup. We'll get trash cooked and have it done on the computer, ready to look at.
Where Southern Hospitality and History meet?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Whereas since it's, it's two trucks, that's two trucks, two sides, that's four sides, so you could, you know, do more than one of these.
One for each side of them?
Yeah, and you could do one on each side, yeah.
We'll, we'll do a couple of them, mall cups, we can look at, and then we get the EP. Something different on both sides, something on both sides. All right, please. All right, review bids for the water filter we have at Pine Street, Edward Avenue?
Please.
Please?
The last council meeting, y'all asked me to get together a price, quotes for, we have an water filter at Edward, Pine Street Water Filter Plant. I advertised it on Ski Boat, which is South Town Business Opportunity Division, uh, the procurement service in South Carolina. That's where the state contract purchases are located. It's instruct, it's legal construction notice to all contractors for requests for bids for this project. We received one.
Yeah, black and white. If this came in, whatever, today.
They, uh, in our advertisement, we said that they would have to be delivered here by six o'clock, and this is the only one we have, city. Contractors' legal name is North American Construction Company.
Is that, is that in the right range, again, I don't know.
When we first started looking at this thing, and last year, they estimated the cost to be $60,000.
But that got bid, sir.
Well, when you put it out to bids, it's in double price, everybody knows that, and when you bid it, it's in at least double. But we sure didn't expect it to go up four times.
Good.
Could you explain, just for the benefit of the, of the public, what this, what this does for the citizens?
The filter itself, uh, I, I'll have to get into a little bit of treatment. We, in this area, and this is not just the city of Darlington, but everybody located in, in, in the coastal plain, and we're considered to be in the upper coastal plain, has a certain amount of iron in the water. And iron itself is not toxic, but the levels can be damaging to your plumbing and can cause other problems. So, we remove some iron. In doing so, they create a lime, uh, iron slurry by the addition of lime and oxygen into the water in an aeration chamber. I don't get too much into detail here, but they create this iron lime sludge. Well, that has to be filtered out of the water, and that's what these filters do. The filters are large cylinders, metal cylinders, that have, uh, different sizes of media in them. And, and the first is a, a layer of, of real fine sand, and then it gets into heavier sand, and then it gets into a layer of gravel. And, and then the, the last layer is a, a layer of anthracite, which gives the water a more pleasant taste. It's charcoal filter, if you will. And, uh, we measure the amount of iron in the water prior to the filter, and of course, after the filter. And at some point, all of our filters are gonna fail, or begin to fail, and it should happen very, very slowly. And then, when that happens, it's known as breakthrough. In other words, the sludge or the iron and the lime are breaking through the filter. That hasn't occurred in any of our filters. However, they have all been in operation for a long time. And the Pine Street and Edward Street Water Filter Plant has been in use more than all of our other water plants. It, it takes the line, it probably does 80% of all the water that's been produced in Darlington over the last 10 years or so. I, I don't know prior to that. However, these, these components, just like everything made by a man, are gonna break down. The, the cylinder itself, the metal is gonna corrode at some point. The, uh, media inside the filters and, and these, this pig gravel and this anthracite are at some point gonna get clogged with this, uh, iron lime slurry that we're creating. And, uh, we backwash that every day that they use it, they, they pour water through it, and they also backwash it to clean it. But at some point, it's gonna get saturated with this iron lime slurry that is gonna be impossible to clean. What we're talking about, and the, the cylinder itself, the interior walls of the cylinder are gonna break down. It, because metal, it's just gonna act. So, at some point, we're gonna need to drain them all.
Right.
Look at the condition of the filter and repack them, and that's what this project is.
Charles, so, so at this point, what, what, what are we doing?
What's your advice?
What we, my advice is, we haven't had breakthrough yet. So, I say we, we wait to do this project and try to fund it in the next fiscal year through other sources. Either through another, a grant of some type, or, or a USDA R D loaning grant, which we can get, or a, just a loan from the, um, from another agency, uh, State Revolving Fund. Uh, and there could be a possibility that we can even get forgiveness of those loans through the State Revolving Fund. So, that's, that's real free money, and, and not like grant money. No, grant money's not free. And so, but if we get forgiveness of the principal of the loan, that is free money. And there's a possibility that we can do that. Uh, the State Revolving Fund has funded a lot of projects and has granted a good bit of principal forgiveness over the past year. And most of those projects, I have a list of them, I print them out every month and look at them. And almost every one of them are water projects. They are, they are giving money away in sewer projects, but we've gotta meet some criteria for them. And I, I have, uh, talked to the guy that's over that section more than once a month since I've been here, trying to get into funds for projects or, or do principal forgiveness in a project. But we haven't been able to meet quite all of his criteria yet in any project that I've talked to him about. And we've always been doing is talking, so we haven't spent any money trying to get one of them.
If you have a failure, theoretically, how long would it take from failure to completion to correct the situation?
Uh, with this project, this, uh, this, this bid is nine days. So, you know, it should be nine days or less.
He's asking, is if, if you wait six months down the road, correct me if I'm wrong, Howard. He's asking if it's six months down the road, we say we go wait, six months down the road, it does fail.
Right.
And we gotta go out and fix it.
With, yeah.
How long would it take?
Okay, I would, nine days or less. Now, remember, we have four of these.
Does that mean that we can, or if they shut one off and shut it down?
We can, and we don't really have to shut it down. It may be that we just don't produce as much from Pine and Edward Street for, for period of time. Kind of allow one of our other water plants for the blind share of our water.
All right.
Thank you, sorry for the busy work.
All right, uh, before you go, I want to ask, I know this don't happen. Did we ever get the bid, the, the last bid for the lift station? I never heard anything back at, uh. Did we ever get the bid, the, the last bid for the lift station? I never heard anything back at, um, at King Edwards, Limit, Limit Street, Farm Street?
Limit Street, Farm Street. We had bids to buy those pumps prior to Christmas time, but I couldn't get the two bids of that. And I asked everybody in the world for bids on those pumps, like everybody that I knew that sold them. And for whatever reason, this council didn't wanna go with those two bids. Y'all wanted to go with three. The supplier that gave us the low bid said if we didn't buy them now or in the next thirty days, he wouldn't be able to give them in twenty twenty-two. I've spoken to him twice since then, and he still cannot get them in twenty twenty-two. So that's where we are. We're spending money on diesel fuel pumping around there as a temporary fix.
So my question is, when are we gonna, what's the status of the, of the Allen Street Lift Station that we, uh, got the grant for? What is the holdup on that?
The Allen Street Lift Station? That's a completely different project. You know, that's a community development block grant that was, that was awarded to us in September. It's in design phase right now, and I think they're still doing surveying for that, or they were last week. Now, Allen Street, that project is not just a pump station.
No, it's not just a pump.
No, there are a lot of other components in the city going in.